Valley Ranch Town Council to order. It's February the 4th at 10:00 AM. We do have a quorum of council members present. Let the record also show that Town Administrator Aiken and Town Clerk Gray are also in attendance. I could get a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I move we approve the agenda as written.
May I have a second? One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is our swearing-in ceremony for this morning. We have two council members to swear in. Also, we will then move on and appoint our new municipal judge. So, I'm going to turn it over to the Town Clerk right now.
Clerk Gray, your right hand, repeat out your name.
I, Mayor Reginald Rock.
I, Mayor Reginald Rock.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will... I solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated any law related to my election or appointment.
That I have not knowingly violated any law related to my election or appointment.
Or caused it to be done by others.
Or caused it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. And we will move on to soon-to-be Councilman Bitter.
The side that this side. I don't have a good side.
I, Councilman Wade Bitter.
I, Councilman Wade Bitter.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated any law related to my election or appointment.
That I have not knowingly violated any law related to my election or appointment.
Or caused it to be done by others.
Or caused it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to appointment of our municipal judge. I need a motion for that.
Ma'am, I move the town of Star Valley Ranch approve the appointment of Larry Lawson as the town's district court judge to replace the Honorable Judge Ronald McKinn. This appointment is effective immediately.
May I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then opposed, the motion passes.
Welcome.
Have you come forward, please, and the clerk can start.
You raise your right hand and repeat out your name. I, Larry Lawton.
I, Larry Lawton, or I Judge Larry Lawton.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated any law related to my election or appointment.
That I have not knowingly violated any law related to my election or appointment.
Or caused it to be done by others.
Or caused it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations. So, at this part, or at this time, we're going to go ahead and move into work session. So, if we want to try and shift any tables around, we just want to stay like this. It might be simpler to keep it like this, I guess. Okay, let's just do that. All right, Council, the first item we have on our short work session agenda is the Mountain Estates development. And tomorrow, I know everyone in the Council is familiar with this development. We've talked about it on and off over the past few months. You know, Councilman Bitter, you're probably still working to get caught up on a lot of things that are related to this. Tomorrow, the Lincoln County Commissioners will meet and have a planning and zoning, or meet with the Planning and Zoning Commission. And the Mountain Estates subdivision is on the agenda. One of the conditions of approval is the access from Mountain Estates onto Vista West Drive. We did previously receive a recommendation from our planning commission, the Council members, and Councilman Bitter, I don't know if I would that's forwarded to you or not.
No, but that's different.
The rest of the Council, I was a member weeks ago when we met. I think we've got a lot of public comment about the development and about access to Vista West. And I don't know if anyone had any particular comments or how you think we should approach the meeting tomorrow. I know I'm planning to participate. I don't know if the County Commissioners have any questions. I did send you all some information yesterday when Town Administrator Aiken and I met with Stephen Allen, the Chief of Staff from the Lincoln County Commissioners. His... He gave us an idea of what thought was going to happen. But I don't know that that doesn't mean everything's set in stone, obviously, because they haven't met yet. So, do you have any thoughts on the access, thoughts on the appointment, thoughts on moving forward?
My question is, do they actually need to have a full access? Or can you put one of those barrier emergency only?
Like a breakaway gate.
Just breakaway gate, yeah. Has that even been discussed? Because everything that I have seen, I had not seen anything or any comments towards that.
All right. When Town Administrator Aiken and I talked with the Chief of Staff, that... We did bring that up. I think his response, if I remember right, Trevor, was sort of, we didn't know that that was going to fly or not, which I did also talk to the Lincoln County Planner, Liz Williams, and that was one of her suggestions. And that was a conversation we had had after the meeting on the 20 seconds. But I don't know where the Planning Commission landed on that recommendation.
And that approval has to come from the Planning Commission on the breakaway. Who determined?
I think they would make a recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah, so we could do this or this. I also heard they were considering maybe just leaving it as an easement and not actually making access now, which would mean if access in the future was ever something that we then wanted as a town or the development then needed, we would have to potentially pay for it. If, again, that's a whole different conversation with annexation. So, it's just a matter of, you know, if you want to keep it as a... Not that it's our decision, but if it was an easement, then that would leave some flexibility in the future. But it's a tough call. Any thoughts, Councilmember?
Yeah. I don't know what the decision is that we're going to be making until after the County Commission meets. They can modify the proposal that's on the table. They can accept the proposal that's on the table. They can reject the proposal that's on the table, which moves it back to the 2018 project. Until I get that information, I don't feel like I can make any kind of a decision at this point. And thanks to the Wyoming State Legislature, a development can happen there and we don't have any control over any of this. So, there are a bunch of moving pieces on this. And until I find out what it is I am supposed to be looking at and get a chance to analyze it, I just say, let it go to the meeting tomorrow and see what happens.
I think all the Council's aware that the current proposed amendment to the master plan is a less dense community than currently.
Correct.
So, we did get an indication that, you know, the Commissioners might be favorable towards that as well. The access to the road, though, is still purely the town's decision. So, the Commissioners cannot tell us, even if they approve that, that we have to grant the access. So, I'd agree with you that voting today, a yes or a no, may not be in our best interest to do because we don't really know what it is we're going to vote on. But 2018 plan actually has two access points under this request, one I'm not saying.
But that one hasn't been approved by the DEQ either, so that's not really in place, even though if they don't approve the current one, they still have to go through the DEQ. And so, we tell that and it happens. Just because county permits it doesn't allow them to just go ahead and start.
Oh, no, to start developing. But as far as the footprint of the community, I think, and I might be mistaken about this, I think that that 2018 one with those access points is still sort of the official footprint of the road access. It's not so changed, but...
But we don't really have any say over that. You know, the whole subdivision, if it grows, if it builds, if it, you know, comes to fruition. We don't have control for that. We have control over our road. So, I feel like that we can vote on. And just from hearing from our constituents and how they have felt about it, even our emergency access, I don't think is in our best interest at all.
Councilwoman Wilson?
I agree. I went to the last planning and zoning meeting and they clearly asked us what we were... if we were going to approve the condition or not. And so, I think that is what they are looking for tomorrow, is to just see where we stand, whether we vote yes or no. But I feel like that's what they were looking for. And I agree that our constituents have said no. Every single person I've talked to has said absolutely no. And I understand there's not been a, as far as I know, that there's been no annexation application put in. And the last map we got was out into 2033 for development. How many of us are even going to be here in '33? Like, some of us are two-year terms right now. To be voting on something that's we want to be a part of possibly in the future, I just... I don't think that's right right now. I think listening to the people is what we are here for. And I have not had one person tell me this is a good idea.
Keep in mind, you stated already that if the county goes ahead and approves one or the other, we have no say over it. You are absolutely correct in that. Wyoming is a property rights state. Something will be built there. The question then becomes one of, if it is annexed, then we do have something to say about what happens on that property.
Sure. We don't have any idea that it wants to be annexed. Is there an application in for it?
No, there is not an application to annex.
Then why aren't we looking into the future?
However, you have had a discussion at the last meeting of this council. It was brought up by the developer that annexation might be a point. So, I'm back to, I would prefer to not do anything at this point and an open discussion up after we find out what the county wants or what the county is willing to approve.
I think that discussion needs to involve our public then and have a public meeting because we need...
I have a problem with that.
I don't think we've done a good job of explaining to a lot of people what is the possibility of happening on that road. And there's a lot of homeowners that are not here right now that are going to have a say in that. So, I think we need to do a better job of communicating what the outcome could be.
I'm not disagreeing with that.
I agree with definitely having a meeting with the public so that we can provide all the information when we have it. And I feel like right now, we don't have it ourselves as a council.
We're just talking about the Vista West access.
Right.
Well, what other knowledge do we need?
I mean, we haven't even had a good traffic study on what the impact there would be. Also, I mean, you have to as a council, and I understand, Councilwoman Wilson, what you said about, you know, we're not even, most of us are going to be possibly in these seats in 2033 or 2058. But it's still incumbent on us to have a long view and to look at what things we do now that could impact in the future. I'm not advocating for annexation, I'm not advocating for the access to Vista West, but I don't think we can just look at it in a little piecemeal access to Vista West only. I think we have to look at it holistically and how that development ultimately is going to impact this community, whether any of us in this room are here or not. So, there's a lot of things to consider. And I think it would just behoove us to have a really good cost-benefit analysis, pros and cons. We've got piecemeal things. We've got an initial assessment from our town engineer. If we make no decision today, I don't think that puts us in any worse position. We'll know tomorrow what the Commissioners are going to do. We meet next Tuesday for our regular town council meeting, and we have another work session then. So, we can certainly bring it back up and discuss more. We can plan to have a public meeting. Obviously, we're not going to be able to squeeze that in between now and next Tuesday. But it could give us an opportunity next week to plan for a public meeting to be able to provide as much information as we can to the community. Like, we feel like that's something we need to do.
So, I'm just curious. You've done a lot of talking to the people, you know, finding out what their opposition is. What are those main factors that you're finding out? What is the biggest concern in your mind?
All of the road traffic that everybody who lives up there. Road traffic, lights, dust, all the problems we had last summer without additional traffic. Construction trucks going up and down that road. Just using our access, if the likelihood of them using us versus us using them is what the feedback. And a lot of people are just really uncertain of what is going on. So, I know that takes them getting involved, but this is a huge decision for this town for the future that a lot of people are unaware of.
That's good. It's good to understand what their concerns are because if the Planning and Zoning Commission does agree, hey, we're going to agree with this application, the less dense one, we got to be prepared to answer those questions because then again, what's our position going to be?
Because right now, that Vista West access is one of the conditions that are... It's part of the whole packet that's moving through.
Who part of the easement use this emergency?
When I spoke with Liz Williams, the planner, who's the one that's shepherding the package through, she's the one that brought that up as an option. But it was prior to her having further discussions with the planning director or the Commissioner. But it was, she was looking at, you know, what else could be done, you know?
Well, I mean, I think, sorry.
I think the fire chief here, Ted Jenkins, is the one who initially brought that up at the county, saying it would save 15 minutes in an emergency to have a, have an access there. That's where it started.
So, I think that the planning and zoning meeting a couple of weeks ago, partly concerned was that the gentleman that's fire, he doesn't have a tank to feed into him at all and, or Tom Gordon, anything of the sort. So, I mean, as far as a truck getting there, I don't know that an access is going to make a big difference at this point. And also, an emergency, I mean, who's going to be covering that easement then? Is it ours or are we supplying a gate? And then are they contributing towards the, what, $70,000 that we just put into our emergency building? I think without a written contract of some sort to even look over, that's not even something to consider. Nobody has brought that forth at all except the Planning and Zoning Commission. So...
See, that's my point. To make a decision today, then there's no negotiations going forward as to what happens on that point. We wait and find out what the county does, then we can enter into negotiations.
With who?
The developer.
I don't want to negotiate with somebody on our council. Those are our people's roads to decide on. Not necessarily at home, at home.
My question is tomorrow, so a lot of us were there at the last, at the last meeting. And three of us stood up and talked. Are we going to have opposing views? I don't know if the County Commissioner meeting, you allow for public... I'm going as well. So, is somebody going to stand up and say, we don't have an answer? And I'm going to stand up and say, I don't agree with it and I'm speaking for constituents? I mean, there was two very... I felt like there were two different opposing views that stood up at that planning and zoning meeting. And maybe now that has changed, but I'm thinking they want to know what we are thinking and who's going to represent us.
I mean, I went to that meeting and you can talk as a councilperson for the town. As far as the town's official position, we haven't provided it yet. And we don't provide that until we make a vote about it. I don't think we're in a position to do that today. I would prefer to wait until after we see what the Commissioners are going to do tomorrow. And then we can reengage with it next Tuesday. If we're at a point then, again, I still think there's a lot of information that we should have in front of us before we decide on the other.
So, the discussion is really, should we wait to make a decision, is what I'm hearing?
I think so. I'm not, I'm not prepared to bring it to a vote today.
So, what more information do you need to vote?
I mean, I think we should have the fire chief in here. We should have a discussion with him. We should have... Brian put together a preliminary engineering assessment. I would like to probably get him in here and have, have us have the opportunity to talk to him some more.
I thought he sent them over. Is that not...
But I mean, it was three pages, so there wasn't a lot to it. I think we could have a more intelligent discussion about what our path forward is going to be once we know what the Commissioners are going to do tomorrow. Because if they can approve it, doesn't mean there's access to Vista West. That's still a condition of development, right? For any further development to proceed, there's lots of other conditions on that application right now.
If you're 16, if I remember right.
16 or 18. So, my recommendation is we defer further discussion until next Tuesday at our work session. And by then, we'll at least know if this amended master plan for the development is approved. And Mr. Isaac's here.
Yeah, just to try to help, maybe help the concept. I agree, you're heading in the right direction. But to get clarity, give you clarity of what the developer's intent is, I don't see a negativity to having a crash gate for emergency. I think to prepare for emergency in any situation is always proactive rather than to eliminate that option. So, I would just recommend the developer's intent is to not have access to Vista West. That's not the intent. That's not the desire, doesn't want it, don't have any intent that way. I just want to make that clear that... But to have an access point for emergency, I think it would benefit both parties. I don't see any negativity there. Maybe there is, and I'm not, and I'll be the first one to say that one way or another. But just for clarity of your information, that people are fearful, I get it, I understand that. But it is for emergency, I think, to look at as a point of access for emergency, I don't see the negativity if it was a crash gate. Because then it can facilitate that emergency that may erupt. If not, it's not you, it'd no impact on you or me, right? That, that's the intent of it, and that's what's going to be proposed at the Commissioner meeting. Okay? Just for...
That helps, so that's why...
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm just questioning. So, you're changing what you're asking for at this point? Because it was my understanding you wanted road access to, from Vista West for your people to eventually use. Now, you're asking for just emergency access.
To clarify, never really wanted it.
It was the county.
That was proposed by the planner.
Yeah.
By Liz. And in that recommendation, and to me, because honestly, my roads will be paved. Yours are dirt. Who's going to go through the dirt versus if they got to pay their own? It's a shorter access to money street. But again, I think those are elements and issues that don't really need to be discussed because I, I don't want it. And I think it would be best, in the best interest of just having an emergency access point. I think that would be beneficial. But again, that doesn't need to be. So, the developer, if it's not that they ever wanted it, that's what the planner was suggesting that would be needed. So, I don't want to go on, hey, I need this, I want it. But, and that's why in the last workshop, I already stated, hey, if you want, that's great. We do need to be safe. We do need to look for the kids, like I said, the concerns of the kids, the dust, the lights, the whole thing. But unfortunately, that, that problem is going away, even if that development doesn't ever happen. But as Councilmember Ellis, it will one day, whether it's me or somebody else. And to have that plan in place, and I like your forethought, hey, this is going to affect us people in the future. We may not be in the seats, but it does affect. And have that, but... So, just to give clarity, is there any other questions regarding that?
Do you have a tank, like a plan for a tank that should feed the fire hydrants?
Do I have a plan for what?
A tank, like a holding tank for water.
Not at this time, no. The development's new, it's just brand new, I haven't been developed. I've got a well that can service what's, what's there, and I have the permit. And I have all permits for the, the building.
Didn't the well get made like a couple, in the long area where it should be the easement?
No, I have the well where it's at. There is an easement that actually has a 200-foot easement that is for wellhead protection, for, for a, what is the word? For a community water service. But right now, I don't know about violations.
Yes. So, the 200 isn't somebody else's easement? Because that was the understanding.
Yes, and they have to be in sign. The attorneys are actually working through that, and we do have, they're getting that process.
And then the pump is putting out 100 gallons right now.
The, the pump is, yeah. It's, it's ready for more, but it, right now, that's what we can raise the service.
The new one is. The new one is. I know that the water system wasn't working for a time. The pump had broke or something of the sort.
No, it's not broken, it's been operable.
The new one is.
The, the existing well?
Yeah.
It's always been operable.
The pump?
Yes. We, we had a power outage that was, that knocked it down. So, but it's operable.
How long was it down for?
With the, in fact, to give you the access, the tenants never lost water. They lost water pressure, they never lost water. It went down to a little 50 PSI. But when we actually got into it, it was, like I said, the power outage that they had up there, it didn't reset. So, we've got, we've updated, it'll reset. We went through several tests and it updates on the power failure, which was a big concern. But no, it serves as well. But I... Any other questions?
Thank you. I think it'd be beneficial for the Council to have a sit-down and talk to Mr. Isaac. When we came to the previous work session that we had, so we, after tomorrow's meeting with the Commissioners, it might be a good idea for us to, if we have additional questions.
Great.
To set something up with you. So, Council, I'm going to recommend that we defer further discussion on this topic until next Tuesday's work session and after the Lincoln County Commissioners meeting tomorrow. The next item on the agenda is the lodging tax grant application for our, from our Travel and Tourism Board from the Star Valley Ranch Association. I forwarded that document to all the council members, essentially $1,000 to procure ice skates for use at the ice skating rink. Does anybody have any comments, questions, or concerns about the application?
Yes, Ma'am, I do have a number of, a number of comments. First, let me state that I am not opposed to what the concept of the ice skating is. I would like to point out that the Travel and Tourism Board has spent an extensive period of time putting together the, what's referred to as, come on, go back up, the, the grant application form. In reviewing the application form, I see that there is no cosponsorship, investment in the proposal in spite of the fact that they already have the ice skating rink and they are willing to provide space to lock up the, the ice skates. And then if you're down and you look at the application form and look at items eight, 10, and 11, there is nothing in the application that talks about the marketing, all this proposed project or event, the marketing, and recognition where the money came from. Finally, I did not see anything from the Chair of Tourism and Tax Committee saying that this project had been approved or gone through the board. Since this is the first one that we are going to be looking at, I would not like to set precedence as to what we are willing to take a look at. So, my suggestion would be to send it back, get it filled out, get approval by the board, and then bring it back at our next workshop.
Any other comments, Councilmember?
My only comment is that the $1,000 doesn't have any detail associated with it, like how many pairs of skates is that? I mean, our form says, please attach a complete and detailed project or event budget. I always would like that, probably have. To, to the point is, if we start not asking for that at the very beginning, it's, it's easier to get away with it. In this case, just, just provide us, how many pairs of skates, what are you buying?
I sit on the Travel and...
I sit on the Travel and Tourism Board, and I think a thousand, I think this is a great first step in bringing the association and the town together, for one. Using some of our travel and tourism money for something that is being used right now. They're not asking for a lot of money. I feel like your points are very valid, and I'm sure that we can go back to them rather quickly and say, please note that travel and tourism money has been used for these ice skates. They do a lot of marketing, the association does a lot of marketing for their ice skating rink. I feel like these are pretty easy. And, yeah, I've talked about this a lot with Vince, and he's the one spearheading this and is doing a really good job. I think that giving them these bullet points back, I think we could fix rather quickly and move forward with this grant.
We do have a work session Tuesday, so if we can bring it back up on Tuesday with these corrections, I think we, since it's the first one out of the gate and it is public logging tax ones, let's just dot the i's and cross the t's on it, and people be ready to move out.
Yeah, Vince has done an exceptional job, and I know that Tourism, Travel and Tourism Committee has had conversation on this. I'd just like to see it done correctly the first time.
I mean, I think that in the future, we should also have the grants tied down. Because I think in in grant only, they didn't like types, so I think that should be part of it, just so it's a little more professional.
Is this form something that we could put online and create an input?
Template.
Template, yeah.
Let me know.
Originally, we would show.
Looking at the, possibly, we have some other applications that are online now, so that might be something to get a look at doing, which is simple, why things.
I'd like to put Tourism Board to vote and like give us a recommendation before.
I think, if I remember at our last work session, the chairman Frank Bell came in and talked to us in general, sort of about the process. But you're right, I think if we could get a short little memo that also says the Travel and Tourism Board endorses this and recommends the council to approve.
Yeah, his review is.
Sort of formalize it more, that would be a great addition as well, so. All right, so we'll add this to our Tuesday work session agenda, hopefully button it up and get these little deficiencies corrected. And we'll get the TNT or DOS memo of their recommendations. All good, all good discussion and good comments on this, I appreciate that. All right, moving on. I was gonna spend a little bit of time talking to the council about my expectations as mayor and working with the council. I'm gonna defer some of that to, since we have a off-site budget retreat coming up a bit later this month. I will talk just briefly about some communication for today. I believe all the council received the email I forwarded from the town attorney about the blind copies and use of that in our emails. And that's, so long as we're mindful of not making decisions, you know, behind the closed door of email, we can exchange information. We can have discussions, and we don't need to use PCCs. We just need to be mindful of the Wyoming Public Meeting Law. So we'll make that change moving forward as far as how we communicate our email, and I think everyone's kind of jumped into it already. So I don't think we have any problems there. Whenever there's an email that's sent out, if I'm asking for something, or the town administrator or clerk needs something, like reviewing ordinances, I know those usually come out in a bundle for our meetings, please take a look at those and let's be responsive and provide input. If you as a council member are asked to work on a particular ordinance, you know, because you're the liaison for a board, or it's just something that, you know, was assigned to you because of your expertise. Once you have a draft, if you can circulate it and solicit comment from the council in advance of meetings, that'll help us, I think, with the process and speed things up a little bit as far as getting ordinances through the reading, since we have to read it three times anyway. Let's see, what else do I want to say? These are sort of the little basic things. If you ever have an issue getting to a meeting or attendance, just let me know. In our ordinance, we do have the ability for up to three remote meetings if you're gonna be on vacation. And I know Councilman Bitter, you're gonna be dialing in next week, I believe, on Zoom. So just make sure of the time aware and that the rest of the council's aware if you're not gonna be able to be here in person. If, if as council members, you're working with constituents or encountering things that you're having an issue with, I'd just like the council to be aware of things that are going on. So having surprises or things being brought up for the first time in a meeting is not something I prefer. So if there's things that we can talk about or discuss or share information on, be it email or in work sessions before we get to town council regular meetings, that would be preferable. And then the last thing I'm gonna say about communication in general is that we're always going to agree, and that's fine. I I think it's good when a council can move forward as a unit on things, and that's gonna be plenty of those, because then there's gonna be times when we don't agree. And I think that's okay too. And just to respect everybody's opinions as we move forward. The last thing, one, the previous council, so this is a brand new council, other than, I'm gonna point out Councilman Ellis as being the senior council member now, because the rest of us are all relatively brand new or within the last two years. So this is kind of a new, let's say, era, but kind of, for the town council moving forward. There's just been a lot of turnover, good ideas, new people, I think are a good thing. So it's just gonna take us a little bit probably to, you know, coalesce and 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 understand where each of us are coming from and what our areas of expertise are. But I'm kind of excited about how this council has come together and the work we're gonna do going forward. There's gonna be some challenges for sure, but I think it's gonna be an exciting time for us moving forward. With that, one of the other things I'm gonna work on is a town council rules and procedures handbook. So pursuant to Wyoming statute, the governing body can determine its own rules and procedure. A lot of town councils in the state have a handbook. And yes, we follow Robert's rules, but there's, sometimes there's some nuances there. Robert's rules is more geared toward larger groups, larger more, so there's, you know, if you read Robert's rules in detail, if you ever need something to help you to sleep at night.
Put you to sleep real quick.
It will do that, and you'll know sometimes in in large forums, the chairman doesn't vote on things. Well, that doesn't make sense in Wyoming when we have five member councils, mayor always votes. And if you look at, like, the Wyoming Association of Usitalities Handbook for councils, and also the statutes, the mayor has a vote as well. So there's definitely nuances between our statutes and some of the things in Robert's rules. So a handbook for us would be a good idea. It will include how we'll do our meetings, procedures, rules of debate, decorum, when we conduct our meetings, how the public looks at us. So I'll put a draft together with the help of the town administrator and the clerk, and then we'll circulate it among the staff, so you can have any comments to it. And then we'll make it our official handbook for the council moving forward. And it will be subject to revision going, you know, as time goes on, if we find out something that's in there. And the devil's always in the detail, when you actually implement something and start doing it, and you realize, ah, that's just not working in the way it's written down. So that's another thing I would like to do. All right, that's all I have on expectations, and we'll talk more about that in the future. The last thing on the agenda, our board assignments, because we haven't done that yet. I had some ideas, but I also wanna hear yours. I'm gonna start with Councilman Tulson, just because we talked about it before. If you would still like to remain on TNT as their liaison, I think that could work out well, if you're amenable to that.
Yes, I would also just like to state that I, whether I'm a liaison or not, I would like to be part of the Planning and Zoning Board, so.
So the the Planning Commission, the way it's restructured now, the mayor, I'll be the chair of that board, and we won't have a liaison, but you are certainly welcome to come to any of the meetings, because that board is going to be doing a lot of looking and reviewing, doing a lot of work on things like mountain states and making recommendations, that's the word I was looking for.
Is it okay for any of us to attend those?
Absolutely, these are.
Any, any meetings at all?
These are public meetings, right, so.
So just making sure.
Yep.
Now, let me point out, be careful. If three of you end up in the same meeting and something starts going in the direction of a decision the council would make, you're in trouble.
Yeah. Sometimes it's better not to have more than two, it sounds like. Okay?
Let's see.
Can I talk to someone, do you have a? Um, I think the Water Board and the Road Board that comes public works for, possibly.
Okay, I was gonna ask you if you were potentially interested in the Water Board, so.
Thank you.
And then, Mr. Ellis, Councilman Ellis?
I'm a liaison, so it doesn't matter.
Let's see. I got this one, oh, yeah. Would you be to do natural resource support?
Sure, I'll go back to that.
Okay, let's do that.
That was my first assignment, no.
And then Councilman Bitter, could I peg you with Finance Board?
I'm surprised. Sorry. Yeah, that'd be fine.
All right, excellent. So Councilman Tulson has the Travel and Tourism Board, Councilman Bitter has the Finance Board, Councilman Merrill is going to stay on roads and water. And Councilman Ellis is gonna take NRB. And again, for the Planning Commission, I'm the chair of that going forward. And I am, with the Councilman Ellis's caution, I, if any of the council members wanna come to meetings, I think that's fine. So we'll just try not to gang up on the boards too much by showing up en masse if they're looking, so. All right, that is the last item on the agenda.
Mayor, I'd like turning one other item up if possible. Those, since we were all at the last Lincoln County Planning and Zoning meeting, you heard the comments as to septic systems on a ranch and water quality. Turns out, in going through our ordinances, if you take a look at 152.04, Septic Sewer Requirements, you're gonna see the following statement. "The applicant shall provide to the town a complete study certifying that all county, state, and federal standards for septic sewer requirements have been met. A, the county standard for lots less than five acres for single-family resident requires an enhanced, advanced septic treatment system as directed by NSF standard forty." Now, that happens to be under the chapter 152, which is subdivisions. Any subdivision that the town ends up creating and or annexing has to meet that. We do not have that in the town, septic sewer system in the town as it exists right now. I have taken the liberty of sending that language to the county planning commission, the county planner, to see if that language would be applicable to put in for all new septic tanks, septic systems in the town going forward. So we'll see where that comes out. I just want everybody to know what I'm, what I'm looking at there. And since I found it already in our ordinance, I'm open.
Good start. All right, thank you for that. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have a question. Can I have one question?
All right.
Going back to the developments coming in, this first I've heard of is Crash Gate. And I've walked an inch away down in Salt Lake City, we've got a electronic gate that shuts off for a gated community. The reality is that during the winter, the gate doesn't work with snow, and therefore, we leave the road open. And that's the only way that snowplows and stuff can get through there, to keep that clear. So I have no idea how a crash gate will work in the winter, up here at period. And the second part about a crash gate that I'm concerned about is that we're big snowmobile motorcycles. They're kind, they'll cut that corner without even thinking to us, unless it's fully fenced in, blocked, crashed it. So I'd be really concerned about a crash gate idea when it's not something you can do in the winter. And so the second thing is you're gonna have to leave it up to keep it clear so it's usable. And the next thing about the road is I really liked Councilman Tulson review of the public, the listening to him, I thought that was great. And, but, an annexation is the time. I mean, we wanted the city down in Salt Lake to take over part of our road. And they came back and said, great, we'll do that, but here's a list of things that I want you to do before we'll do it. And it's like rebuild the road, all right? And so before I'd allow a annexation to happen, is it should be, say, we're not letting in here. We'll do it at the time of annexation, and here's a list of our criteria, just saying.
No, that, all valid points, and there are very detailed annexation requirements in the Wyoming statutes. And part of that process is negotiation with the land that, or the municipality or the adjacent community that's going to be annexed. So those are all things that would have to be hashed out ahead of time. So definitely appreciate that. And I know that some of that happens back in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, because there was a prior annexation discussion that was had. And we would certainly have, you know, probably multiple public meetings before we even got to that. But at this point, with the, even with the crash gate, there are lots of other questions that need to be answered and whole operational procedures that would need to be figured out between the town and the development, quite frankly, just for that. So that, again, that's another reason why I wanted to defer today, but I just don't think we have the answers. But thank you for the comments.
And I'd like to say thanks for replying to my email and phone calls.
Sorry, no problem. All right, motion to adjourn.
Have we talked about taxes for the year tonight, or is that, we're gonna do Tuesday.
Everyone wants to stay, I mean, did I get a motion to adjourn?
We adjourned.
Okay, did I get a second? All fair. Hi, all right, all, hearing that, we oppose, the motion carries, the meeting is adjourned.